He's rolling down. He's rolling down.
At this time, we're going to ask that you stay in vacation and I pledge allegiance by Mr. Hudson.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight, St. Patrick's Day, to conduct the county's business. We have a lot to do. We have, as we proceed to develop a budget for the next year, make us all mindful that we have a lot of needs, a lot of wants, but make sure we're able to fulfill the needs of the county. Please be with us in our deliberations. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hudson, at this time, we'll open the floor up for public comments. Is there anyone?
Give them like 10 minutes if they don't.
Public comments. No public comments? Okay, we'll move on. She, she, no, we don't want, no, we don't do that tonight. She, we're gonna have plenty from her. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda, presentation of FY 2026 County Administrative Proposed Budget. Mr. Steel, 10 minutes.
When I'm taking water to the podium, which I've never done before, geez, I'll tell you something.
Uh huh.
Get a bucket ready, she's gonna spill that. Need to put a compare in.
I think it's the driver.
It was the driver. I know it was.
Joey, you still worry about the driver?
Good evening. It's good to be here, and we were just joking about March Madness, and it's great basketball time. It also means it's our basketball tournament time. It also means it's county budget time. This is the county administrator's proposed budget, but this is not just my budget. This is something that Maria Callaway and her staff have worked very hard on, the admin staff, everyone, you know, Trish, Whitney, just on and on, everybody helping to put the packets together, and Katie from utilities, the other department heads. This is by far the hardest budget I've had to put together, but it's also, I think, one of the hardest ones that we've had in many years. And I have said to you all numerous times that I kind of feel sorry for you because you have such difficult decisions to make, and I think this year, this is, this is where you're gonna really face that. There is no perfect answer. There is no pleasing everybody, but this is remnant, reminds me, I should say, of 2008 in some ways, just a lot of challenges. It's also a different budget because we're, we're looking at a proposed tax increase, we're looking at a utility fee increase, we're looking at new capital debt financed, and cuts and requests and all the others, the normal things. As we go through, if there are page numbers that you want to note, because I'm gonna try to do the presentation all together if I can, and then if you have questions, we can come back, and I think we've got all the page numbers all good to go. And I also want, because this budget is complex, I, we decided that we wanted to put together an appendix, so that the presentation can be more about what's proposed, what's going on, but then some of the additional details that you all might want to look up at another time can be in the back in the appendix and not just make the main document longer. All right, highlighting the budget. We are looking at a, for the proposed budget that it includes, provides for, a 3% COLA for the employees and a 6% state-funded increase for the dispatchers in the 911 call center. And that is something, again, that the state has provided funding for. We'll see that it, make sure that it's final by the governor's signature when their budget is adopted. We have one new staff person included in the budget, which we'll explain later, and there are selective staff career ladder increases. There's also an increase for the board of supervisors' salary, and that would begin in January of next year, so it's a half year. And then there is level support for existing external agencies and partners, and notice existing, not new ones, and full support of our fire and rescue departments. The budget incorporates the cuts that I've done in the past and that normally are done by the county administrator, and speaking with the board members, I explained that bringing together a bigger budget with more requests, I think, would have made the process even longer, so I've tried to make some cuts, and of course, as they're noted, you can always go back and add them in, but even with making those cuts, we are still looking at a requested 4.3 cent tax increase. And this includes level funding for Gloucester schools, so it's not an increase proposed. It's a 12 and 1/2% increase for health insurance costs, both to the county and the employees. And then we have included almost 50% of the estimated salary study implementation cost, and then there are more than $1.2 million, unfortunately, in revenue reductions that are a part of the budget. It is an $88,356,943 budget, which is 2% higher than the FY '25 amended budget, I think, as well as what is included, to just go ahead and say right up front, what's not included in the budget. The subsidy of the utilities fund with general fund dollars, seven of the eight positions that were requested are not in there, as well as two additional part-time employees. It does not include full funding of what the department heads asked for in their work as required salary line items. It only, it does not include 41% of the FMRR funding request. It does not have the additional school funding. The superintendent's request was $495,729 more, and you'll be discussing more about that tomorrow night. It does not have full funding of department operating requests. Many different cuts were made to take people back to FY '24 actual or level funding, and as I said, it doesn't include the full amount for the compensation study, and trying to do something two years is very difficult. It misses almost a million dollars' worth of capital improvement Pago and even more when you look at debt finance requests, and then it does not include full funding for the external requests from organizations. Before getting into the details, I wanted to remind you all of some of the things that we've discussed and have them hopefully in the back of your mind, kind of philosophically of where are we and how do we do our budget. So in capital funds, as I mentioned, almost a million dollars in Pago was not, is not in the proposed budget. The FY '27 budget, so looking to next year, has $6.9 million in the Pago request and another 6.9 in debt financed, and we have no idea how those projects would be funded with where we are standing now, or any of them, really. We have a practice of basing capital projects on what is left over from last year's budget, rather than looking at what's needed, when is it needing, needed, and funding it in the CIP as part of the budget. We have a lack of funds for desired economic development, the smart growth, as we say, and that's either incentives, it could be land acquisitions, it could be grant matches. We, we don't have money set aside to help with that, and we rely on grants to fund many of our capital projects or portions of them, and then we're continually postponing funds for quality-of-life related services and facilities that will keep Gloucester as a vibrant community. So I'm hoping that we can address how we manage our funds so that we provide a more stable budget and pick up on best management practices that we are not doing at this time. Okay, looking at the money side, the revenue side coming in first, and our projected collections. So we usually do a quick comparison of our tax rates. This is the current, you know, tax rates are done on a calendar year. This is, this is current with showing the proposed '25 rate. There is a chart in the back that has the full 25-year history. What we wanted to do was to show all the different years that something happened where there was an activity, either because the assessment was not equalized or there was a tax increase, so you could kind of see in 25 years what's happened. And I love this couple of next charts that we've added in. First of all, this is just looking at our rates over time, and obviously, as our house values go up, our tax rates have gone down, and we've had some significant plunges in lowering our tax rate as the value of homes went up. And we're not alone in this pattern. If you look at the comparison that Maria's staff was able to put together real quickly, we just included two other communities around us, you'll see that the patterns, where they may be a little bit higher or lower than, you know, than ours, but they're pretty similar. We all have experienced the same kind of things going on as the housing values went way up, and even on the last part, we, where they've been up, meaning our tax rate is lower, they've been staying level at this point. A penny for next year, we're looking at is $568,845 in additional revenue, and here's the chart, again, of the, the current tax rates, and you'll see that Gloucester's at the bottom. We've had numbers of discussions of how our services do not match the ones of the, across the river, for some of the things like paid fire and rescue, community centers, trash services. We also mentioned that our lower tax rate does include solid waste services at no cost to the citizens, so that's not added to what would be in their tax rate at another community. So another way of looking at it, again, a new chart for you, where it's showing the average home values in the bar chart and the, the taxes that are paid for those average homes, so it just kind of gives you, again, a visual. You can see that Gloucester's home value isn't that much different than some of the other communities around us. And for staffing and for other ways of doing comparisons, we often look at Isle of Wight County because they are similar in nature, how they're positioned to get to, closer to metropolitan area and how they are for their population, similar to ours. Moving on to personal property tax, where there is no proposed increase, Penny will generate $46,178. We're the second lowest in the region with the $295, and this is a chart that we've talked a lot about, and showing that when we collect our revenues, both the personal property and the real estate, we have had a growing revenue reduction, and our tax relief program has grown by 238% since 2016, and you can see it climbing very quickly in the last few years. The total relief now is estimated over $1.5 million. The situation here is that the state changed the laws, and we have to provide relief in different ways, and it's not saying that, that the county wouldn't have wanted to on its own, but this was put upon us with no additional funding, and so the state has not made us whole on it, the entire region, and I'm sure Northern Virginia and other areas are complaining because they are missing millions of dollars in tax revenue that they once had. Looking at the revenue outlook summary, where there are some changes in the federal, we introduced a, hold on, sorry. This is, I'm gonna flip to the other chart so I can see, because I started to say we introduced the grant fund, and I'm getting myself out of order. Okay, so the projected revenues, you can see, incorporates 2.4 million in the projected tax increase. So when you look at this budget of 88 million, it's already showing that tax increase, and we, as noted, we have the slowest growth we've had since 2013. And yes, and the, the differences in going down in the Commonwealth's budget and the federal budget are mainly due to the grant funds, so we just shuffle things around. This is not like the state has cut our funds or the federal government has cut our funds. We've moved things around. The miscellaneous expense, you'll recall that we had the sale of one of our buildings, and then we ended up spending the funds, so that is part of that miscellaneous, and there are some other items that we can get down into when we get down to the line item line item in future meetings. With expenses, the first way, because we're switching from revenues to expenses, looking first at compensation and personnel. So I mentioned the 3% COLA and the 6% for the dispatchers, the new position, and the salary study, the career ladder, the health insurance, and we made a change in vacancy savings to help try to balance some of these additional new expenses, so the addition there with adding $200,000 to vacancy savings is a 1.7 addition to the budget. The board compensation, just showing you, here's a bar chart where you, your salaries are all there, your compensation is at the bottom, and so we've included a change here that would increase each board member's salary by $600. Moving on to other general fund, and I'm gonna catch my other pages back up now and get my size. There we go, for my notes. So this is the general fund, the total of the 88 million, but a lot of that is actually, goes out in transfers. So if you take the 88 million and you subtract the 46 million, you'll leave, you'll be left with the 42 million, which is, how much is going into, or that's how much is left after our general, of general fund transfers. We also have the capital transfers in there, and the grant funds, again, are not new dollars, they're just separated to make it easier, and we'll talk about that in a second, too. When we think about the, the pie of 100% of our general fund budget, just thought it'd be interesting to look at what are our top five expenditures and how much does that add up to? And so it, the school transfer, the sheriff in the jail, fire and rescue, and the debt service transfer, and the capital transfer, all add up to 69% of our budget. So the top five, just right off the back, we're already a good way into how our budget monies are used. The facility maintenance repair and replacement program, as we refer to as FMRR, is a, is a great program and trying to keep up with things so that it, that, that we don't end up with more breakage and items that are not big enough for our capital budget, but they also are too big to put into somebody's operating budget that we've been pulling separate. If you look at the total, the 1.6 million, the funding to the sheriff's vehicles is in there, the funding that has restricted accounts are another revenue source, $69,495 are in the budget, and then we put $500,000 flat, so $670,000 of the requested projects are not included in the budget. Other funds, the first one is the grant fund. This is something that our CFO, Ms. Callaway, came up with, and the schools are following suit also. It's a great way to kind of have the transparency and also sort of follow these types of programs and services where they have a dedicated revenue stream with them. So we've just moved them all over. We do want to note that some grants require a match, so this taking from the general fund includes the $396,418 that is our portion of that. The next fund looking at is, is the, to go over, is the education fund with, again, is proposed as a flat funding at $30,424,128. We combine in the, on this chart, when you look at the whole school fund with debt service, you add that in, it totals up to $33,626,228, and that's debt from existing buildings or existing past costs. This does not include the proposed HVAC out of the sales tax this year, and it does not include the buses, which are under the Pago. This is just school fund and the debt, $33 million transfers to them. Social services, as far as we know, these are the state and federal dollars that will be provided. We haven't been told of anything that is being switched because of the changes at the federal level. And the Children's Service Act has a decline, and according to the Director of Social Services, that's because some of the eligible, eligible children have left. Left the program, I should say. The opioid abatement program, now I know why my packet was so thick, because it's putting an extra page behind everyone. I'm a tree killer tonight, I don't like that. The opioid abatement shows a slight increase, and again, these are from a reserve fund, so it's no part of our general fund. And the debt service fund, which shows the fire department in there, but I also want you to see that it does not include a debt payment, and we'll talk about that again when we get to capital. For next year, it does not have a debt payment in there. The approximate payment, and there may be some changes with that, was like 1.1 million. The debt payment for the school HVAC will be approximately $500,000, and that would be proposed out of the school sales tax, and then both of those projects will be borrowing for the first time a year from now, but we wanted to highlight them because they would be starting in this year. And that's tracking the school sales tax fund. I think we've covered that enough. The, I'm gonna just go through real quickly, because again, you're gonna want to study and talk and figure out which questions and things you have later, but the sanitary district of one and Gloucester Point and the mosquito control all have a building to the fund balance, so there's no proposed increase in the fees, and there is a slight increase to the fund balances, but not enough that we can say, let's cut what people are having to pay for them. Just fortunately, we've kept up with the inflationary cost. This chart is the same one with the minor changes where you see the circles, that was presented for Pago requests, and the changes are, under the, the, the one that's at the top was a small decline in what was going to be needed for the IT department, for the networking, and then the registrar was made aware of additional expenses that she was gonna have that would be in next year, so it's, the chart has been modified a slight amount. And the net Pago there at 5.6 million that was requested. On the debt financed projects that were requested, you can see it totals to 25 million, with the bulk of that being the fire department expenses there at 17.3. Here is a chart that is the recommendations that we have for funding of capital projects. The top being financed and the bottom is Pago. The school HVAC, that 4.9 is all five years of the requested Pago projects, and we have done debt financing for HVAC before, and we have done this also with sales tax funds. That's an approved use of doing that. And then Station One, and if you look at the funding source in the far right column, I think the ones I just want to point out that people might think, how in the world are we gonna have that kind of money? The Gloucester Point Beach Park renovations, that is a 95% grant, and the, if the county receives it, and this is for the shoreline rebuilding, it would be a $143,350 county match, and that would only be spent if the grant is received. The generator is 100% grant, and the historic building preservation has its own funds. We have two possibilities to, and there's many more, and we'll work with you on however you would like to combine and things, but two possibilities for funding the fire department, and I've told all the board that unfortunately, the 4.3 does not cover the expense for that debt, and the first option would, and so none of them have an FY '26 impact. One option is to look at a half a penny in '27, and again, in '28. Of course, you could raise it a whole penny in '27, but if you look at what is needed in the chart, you don't need the whole penny. The funding that Davenport did for us with the, the whole model and that Maria has put in her own touch, and we'll, we'll get it back into Davenport, that's why the slide looks like this, but we'll get you a copy that's got their name on it, too. They're just late getting it to us. It, well, I was making the point of what had the chart. It does not do something, I'm sorry. This has been a long process, and I hate that I'm messing this up. Okay, so it has the penny in there, the half a penny on the chart for both '27 and '28. I know what I was gonna say, I apologize, is that it, that uses the retired debt, so key points to understand, that it assumes that our transfer to debt would stay at 4127, what we're paying right now, so we would keep paying that every year. It uses the debt that we're paying off, but you also see in the far right column that we start to generate a bank of funds. So I'm suggesting that in FY '30, based on another retirement coming in and this capital reserve starting to grow, at that point, you could look at, if you wanted to, because then you've got 811,000 and, and that's extra, and so you've got a total of 1.2 million, you could borrow again for other projects, or you could take some out for Pago, or either way, because in all of the Davenport charts, they always have the reserve adding back up and growing again. I think I covered that. Okay, the next option is, what if we wanted to wait to '28 for a tax increase? Because having one in '26 and then back to back, and the other reason is because we have an assessment next year, and we don't really know what's gonna happen, so we'd be able to take into effect, or take that into account. If we waited, we would be looking at an additional expense of $270,000 by postponing and paying the interest upfront and not getting going on the, the debt and waiting until '28. But it's just another option for the board to consider, and the same things are built in, that you would continue paying the same debt that you're paying right now for all the, the past debt, and that means that as it's paid off, you'd be using that money to go towards new debt, and the, the FY '30 is the same target that you could look at, additional spending at that point. And there's a number of charts in the appendix that deal with our, our debts and the, how, when they're gonna be paid off and things. Okay, and the capital fund, got an explanation that's a little bit easier to go through on the next page, which is showing the fire department at the 17 million is in there, the 4.9 for the HVAC, and then we have transfers with the, originally, we had a 299, 2.999 figure of Pago money coming out of fund balance. With the finance software, that goes up a net of 843, and that's the cost of it minus the one program that we won't have to pay for, and then we'll have others that we won't have to pay for in future years. And then the transfer of the tourism fund balance. Okay, another good subject with lots to think about. The highlights for the utilities budget, 3% for the COLA, as with the general fund, the career ladder positions, you see the cost for that, you see the cost for the health insurance, and the pay study funds have not been built in. We don't know whether any of those people or all of those people will be impacted, so it would come out of the general fund part at this point. And then the budget also includes the anticipated 8% of revenue growth from AMI that was already a part of the budget initially, and then 10% generated from the proposed rate increase, and the proposed borrowing would start in '26. The money, the budget is less in '25, and that's mainly because we had a whole bunch of extra capital projects. When you see it going from 11 million to an $8 million budget, it is it is not that the county doesn't care about utilities, or utilities isn't, you know, they're not spending money. It has to do with so many projects in one year, and we really anticipate that some of that, of the 11 million will be carried over, and that 8 million will be 8 million plus. The FY26 projects that are included in there include the motor control center, the Gloucester Street and Clements Avenue water line, the pump station upgrades, which is the design, I believe, for 13, and then the million gallon storage tank, that's the design for it, Tillage Heights water line replacement, and then the pump state generators or bypass, so that when we do have an emergency and they go down. And the total cost of next year's money is 2,095. The five-year list is in the back, all broken down, the three different pages for those The utilities fees that you all approved for going to an April 1st public hearing are as presented here. It's a 14% increase to generate about 10% increase in revenue, and the base rate, looking at the, you can see the amount going across, the new monthly bill being 35 next year, and then going up. The couple of the pros for this plan, the building fund balance happens by year two. Our fund balance is pretty much depleted, it's gone, so when we don't have anything for emergencies, and this would get us back in there, holding on to some money, and again, no general fund impact, some would see as a pro. The impact on the customers over the five years is a 70% increase, and that means for the base fee, going up 2191 a month in a five-year timeframe. While I'm not personally supportive of using general fund money, I was trying to find some sort of a compromise, and the staff, we scratched our heads and worked and worked and worked till we could come up with something, because next year is so tight, there's no, you know, we didn't wanna propose a tax increase higher than 4.3, and didn't want, and we also knew that it, you needed to have money in the first year. And just having a tax increase would not be the kind of money that is needed for capital. So what we proposed if, for looking at an alternative, is to use development fund money in '26 to pay off existing debt. And the development fund, as you all know, has restrictions on how it can be used, and you have to approve it. The money that was borrowed was used to modify the water treatment plant and expand it. And so, dependent upon if the board wanted to do that, you could take money and pay off debt, which would actually lower your expenses in year one. And then, by lowering the expenses, then you can lower the increase for the first, you know, for a little bit in the first part, to make it more palatable. So this would take it down to a 4% FY26 fee increase, and it would generate less money. Overall, it's still a large jump, that in five years, there would be a 70% increase, from 70, I'm sorry, to 44%. The negative part about this is, in my, you know, they're not negative, but the part that's maybe a little bit more controversial or hard to decide on, is the general fund contributions. To make this work out, and pay the development fund back, so that it has money in it for the projects that it's supposed to be doing later on, and to keep the cost down, it would require a four-year commitment of the same amount, 813,256, to utilities. And we, again, purposefully used the development money the first year to lower the debt and not increase the operating funds, or the operating budget for FY26 on the general fund side. So the pros are, it's less for year one impact, and there's no general fund impact in '26. The cons is, are that the possible hurdle when using the development fund, like if we don't get the money back, we've spent it, and by using that 813 upfront, there's only about 500,000 left, which would be for emergencies, even though it's still supposed to be for development, but we don't have a reserve right now, or we won't at the end of the year. And then it impacts the general fund in future years, and the fund balance is slower to build than when going by the 14%. Here is a look at the rates and the difference, and you can go back and flip back and forth between the two as an example. We will be happy to entertain other options that the board would like to look at, but this was the best that we thought would potentially meet the needs of the people who wanted to look at putting general fund dollars, county fund, into utilities. Okay, the external request here, the civic organizations with 59,000 less than what were, was requested, and these are, this is a list of either, they're not funded, they were either new this year, or they haven't been, they were introduced since the time that we've put sort of a freeze on spending on, and there are some very good projects there, but none of them were funded because they were additional cost. And then, the last chart of others, more the partnership ones that we have with the community college, with the PDCs, RUMFA, et cetera, and all of those were funded. And there is, as I mentioned in our budget prep meeting, is a little bit of a decrease. We do have one less grant writer, and some other changes that came about. There's still some increases, so it's a take, a give and take. Wanted to break down Fire and Rescue, which is also one of our partners, and listed on that previous page to show that Abington asked for 114,130 more dollars, and that's in the budget, so the total budget is 5.4 million for Fire and Rescue operating budgets. Budget summary and next steps. So how do we balance the budget? The real estate tax increase and the declining revenue, because of the declining revenue, we have that tax increase for the needs that we had, as well as to make up for that. And then other taxes, such as the sales tax, the meals tax, lodging tax, are all pushed as far out as we think that they can for projections for next year. We use fund balance on the way described there, gone over it several times, and then we had limited additions and budget reductions. Again, give and take, trying to make the budget balance. I put together a list that I thought might help the board, that what are the major areas, and of course, there's gonna be minor areas too, but to make sure that kind of the elephants in the room were on the list, and you might wanna refer back to this as necessary. So the first thing is whether the board is gonna support a subsidy of the utilities fund, and when and how that would occur. The school board's requests, which you will have time tomorrow night at the joint meeting to hear more from them. The compensation study, whether there's a way to make it all happen, or other decision that you have. Looking again at unfunded staff requests, which are in the appendix, and there may be some particular areas that the board is interested in seeing growth happen now. The FMRR cuts, looking at that, making sure there's no adjustments to that budget. And then the capital projects, as we mentioned, there's FY26, you all may have a different opinion on what should be funded, and then looking at how to handle the future funding requests, knowing that we'll be dealing with that before we know it. And then, again, the unfunded request, if there's some particular groups that you would like to see an increase. And I meant to mention, and I know I said this in meeting individually, but just for the public's sake, for the Gloucester Matthews Humane Society, there was a little bit, let me, I'll flip back to that real quick. There was a reduction, they asked for 114,000, and we did level funding for them, but I do wanna note that we have two contracts with them that are shown in the animal control budget, and they have increased, one for the kennel cleaning, and the other one that's a newer one, is the spaying and neutering of animals that are from the shelter, from our shelter. I mentioned to you about having a B budget, and I decided not to put any dollar prices on it, but if miraculously, there was additional funding, these are the priorities that I would want to see things go towards. The compensation of our existing employees, additional personnel beyond the one for the sheriff's department, and more of the FMRR, then the war, then capital projects, the support for nonprofit and economic development fund. And I have, and I apologize if it offends people that I don't have the schools on there, but my hope is that they can make do with the level funding, because that's a large Here's another shocker for you. So I'm recommending that the board advertise a six cent increase, and knowing that the 4.3 does not include a half a million dollars, basically, from the superintendent's request, it doesn't include anything of looking at utilities from the general fund if the board wanted to do something now, and to offer the board the flexibility to look at other things that you would want to have as priorities, my recommendation was to advertise a six cent increase, which would give you another $967,000 of funding, based on that. We will be asking this several times, and feel free to email if you're thinking about things, but we have a number, this is the calendar of meetings coming up, with tomorrow night being the first one, the joint meeting with TC Walker, but we'll be asking if there are particular department heads or program areas that you would like to have somebody come and speak to, and also, as you plan out your work sessions, whether you want to focus on particular topics thematically for any of those, then we'll be happy to make that happen. So I wanna finish out with going through the appendix, so you know what's in there, and can go back and forth to it. This is that 25-year history of the rates, and then there is a chart with the personal property rate, similar to the one in the front, but you can just see it easier than looking on the bar chart. These are the revenue reductions that we mentioned in a little bit more detail, so you can see which ones are veterans and elderly, and also the fire and rescue volunteers for the personal property tax. This is the list that I mentioned for the new positions, and the one in yellow is the only one included, which is the digital evidence investigator that the sheriff has spoken to you about, and I'm sure he'll be happy to come back if you have additional questions, but that is in the budget at this point. And this is the career ladder increases, so you can see how they break down between social services, utilities, and general fund, including sheriff's department. None of these go above grade 19, so these are all like lower level employees too, not mid-level, I guess I would say, early supervisor level. There's a breakdown on our health insurance costs for the employees, and what the rates, the differences will be, and also on the county's cost, and how it goes up. And then, this is just a chart showing you the number of people that are the different plans, so you can see, we do have quite a few in the high deductible, but the more that move into that area, there was savings for the county, and there's also potential savings for the employee. Here are the debt charts that I was talking about, I think there was a number of questions about, between the '24 and the '25 book, and we're happy to, I told, Maria's already prepped to come up and answer any questions that you have on that. So there's '24 and the '25 I just showed, and this is the capital improvement chart that just has the modified, that it shows the last debt payment due. My goal in the '25, I'm sorry, in the CIP for FY26 was to put a chart together that was easier for the public to see, and for you all to just know quickly, when would those funds become available, but we're more than happy to keep the column in there of the last debt payment due. It's very confusing for people who don't deal with this all the time, because of the fiscal year differences, and how that factors in. And again, Maria's got some points here about how debt retirement works, and she'll be glad to address these and talk to you all about that. Here's the breakdown on the CIP for utilities. And the same chart that you've seen before in your handouts about the proposed 14% fee increase, I believe that is it. And I do wanna say, I think you'll know how much my job means to be, and wanting to do a good job, and to come up here and be so tired, and fighting sinus things, and to just blow it, and you can't remember what you're trying to say, is an embarrassing thing, and I'm sorry that that happened, but it's life, so. Thank you, it's a lot. So I'm gonna go back, sit down, and then turn it back over to you, and however you'd like to move forward.
You have any further discussion? Any question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got two questions for Ms. Steel, and thank you for your presentation. On page 38, your alternative for the fire department borrowing, which would postpone a tax increase until FY2028, when would construction start for the fire station under that proposal?
Everything, sorry. Everything is scheduled that it would start as soon as possible. So we've talked with Davenport about paying interest only, we have the contribution from the Gloucester Fire and Rescue, so we would set up the borrowing and go ahead and start with the project as soon as possible. Reality-wise, we're, there's a difference between whether we'll be ready for construction, potentially this late fall, or whether it will be early next calendar year, but there is no delay on construction by postponing. And that's why it costs 270,000 more dollars, because you're postponing your payments.
One other question on page 40.
Is the fire department on that?
No, this is regarding utilities. I think, I think Dr.
Yeah, I mean, given what you gave us as information regarding the fire department and the MOU, and who owns it, will that move facilitate the move by the fire department to act faster if we remove ourselves from our interaction with them regarding the engineer stuff?
I think there are two different, two different issues, and my suggestion would be that you handle that in a separate conversation.
Second question, that's okay. Page 40.
If I can, Mr. Gibson, just to be clear, the county borrows the money no matter what happens, so that's why I don't, it's a separate from the budget.
Page, page 46 regarding utilities and using the development fund to cover FY26 debt payment of 813,256, what is, what is the current balance of the development fund?
It's about 1.5, or 1.1, is it 1.8?
It'll be 1.3.
1.3, that's right. That's right, because it would have five, eight and five equal 1.3.
But this would contemplate a yearly contribution of that same amount, until FY30?
The first year would be using the development fund within the utilities, the next four years would be general fund.
Okay.
And we didn't, we didn't start with general fund in year one and make it all, because I didn't see how that would be possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, following up on the discussion of utilities, I know, having paid close attention to the needs of the utilities, being on the Utilities Advisory Committee, and having watched this group in operation over the last couple of weeks, a compensation issue is really important, because in talking to the people, some of the senior people, one of whom is leaving, and another person who will be leaving in a few years, trying to get really good people who know what to do in situations that have arisen in the recent few weeks, is really important. There are a number of people that have been hired, but then they get experience, and poof, they're across the river. We've gotta figure out a way to get the best people here, because what I have seen, and how the utility people work out in the field, you've gotta have people who know what to do, and do it right, and make sure that when it's done right, they don't have to come back and fix it again.
Right.
Which has been some of the problems that we've seen, based on what I've been observing in the recent past. And that's why I've paid particular attention of going to these particular projects, and just watching these people, and watching the current people. So I just think that, I think we really do have to pay a lot more attention to utilities. We can't afford to have any disaster happen that looks bad upon us, because we now know we have issues that we have to address. We can't put this in the back burner anymore.
I agree, and I think in addition to the wonderful staff that we have, and wanting to have more, and keeping them here, technology is a big part of this, and having all of their inventory and things in GIS, so that work can be more efficient, and that we're in the process of doing, so it's. the process of doing, so it's kind of, it's just helping all the way around. The whole utilities area needed a lot of TLC, and thankfully it's getting some and hopefully will continue.
Next, sir. Mr. Prisco.
Yes, thank you. What is the dollar and cent amount of the 12.5% increase to health insurance? What does that equate to in dollars and cents?
I'm going to let Maria say it because she can do it faster than I can.
Let me see what I, what I stuck in here. All right, so on page 65. Oh, I'm in the wrong presentation. So on page 65, are you asking about the employee or the county impact?
The county impact, because it says a 12.5% increase in health insurance cost. I just want to know what the total burden is in dollars and cents.
The total is 634,714 on the general, general fund and $56,147 for utilities.
Since staff's involved, what's the average usage in water and gallons for residential?
I was going to say, she'll come up.
That's why I said while staff is being involved.
But I, I was looking at that earlier today, and I'll, she'll be able to answer now, but I would suggest that you might want to keep handy the last report that she did where she's got showing like 80% fall into this bracket and things.
Yeah, so I mean, 90% of our residential is 5,000 gallons or less. So averaging is going to be a whole lot harder because when we look at residential meters, we have some that are at apartment complexes or mobile homes, and so it's one meter, but it might have, you know, 60,000 gallons, and we don't know necessarily how many units that goes to.
Okay, on the average single-family home?
Between, I would say four to 5,000, excuse me, 5,000 will go high.
And you have 900 and some that are in the 2,000 and under out of your total customer base. So I remember reading that today. It's not the majority.
I don't have my files.
It's like 1,900 and something, what's your number?
So.
Of total, well, water and sewer.
Water and sewer total customers, 1,940.
Out of that, 1,940, 900 and some are under the 2,000.
That's water and sewer, but what about just water?
We have 50, there's 5,200, no, I'm sorry, just water, there's about 3,300 customers. Just about 1,700 of them are 2,000 gallons or less. So just about 51%.
And that's based on the old meters.
And that is based on, again, a lot of the data that I called was from FY '24. This is old meters. You know, if I had to guesstimate, we were probably dealing with about 400 meters that we're not reading.
Okay, so, but based on that information, when you're putting together the chart starting on page 47, excuse me, 45 and 47, instead of using 2,000 gallons, shouldn't you be using four or 5,000 gallons?
So if you're asking from a revenue generation standpoint, I've actually done the, for lack of a better word, forensics through each consumption tier. So I don't use just the base rate.
I'm using, based on what Ms. Steele presented in, on slides 45 and 47?
So Ms. Legg gave us a slide that we did not get into the packet for the appendix, and we'll send to you. In your appendix, you have it, this chart that shows the whole time. She did another one, the first five years with the current, and it's got every different level, so we will get that to you all. So you can look and.
We've got that on the last one, but my point is, when you're doing the present.
I'm sorry. Yes, it's a different one today.
Okay, but when you're doing the presentation, you shouldn't use 2,000, zero to 2,000 for the revenue, because the revenue is going to be higher for what the average usage is.
It's, and it would be 14% or 4% of their.
Right. The revenue that was proposed was based on the 14%.
I don't, I don't care about the revenue. I'm talking about the per gallon usage that we're showing in slide 47 and 49, where it's showing that the base rate is going from 31 to 40 cents. If the average is truly, let's use 4,000, it goes from a current of 4018 to then 97.58 over 10, or for, let's stop at year 30, to 84 versus the 40 is what I'm getting at.
Yes, so Ms. Steele, what he's saying is he would like to actually see more of the, the actual average consumption versus the base rate.
Versus the minimum.
We did, we did, sorry. We did give the one for the minimum, and you can see it was like already a whole lot on there, and the chart in the back, if, if you wanted to know, and again, we're saying that the, a lot of people are on the lower 51%, but we've got the charts and we can pull that for you and quickly look at. The 4% obviously is a much lower figure, so for example, the 5,000 gallons would go from $50.18 to $52.19. And on the chart that's in the appendix, it should have what the 14% is at that one.
Just as FYI, Ms. Legg presented very detailed information at the last utility advisory committee that was very impressive and would perhaps benefit the committee here, the board to hear that presentation, because it went through a lot of detail that overwhelmed even the advisory committee, but it was the type of detail that perhaps Mr. Hudson might be referring to regarding how it impacts people who use more than the base of 2,000.
They, they've actually received that. That was part of my last presentation. I'm happy to do it again.
I think, I think he's just wanting to see it here as, as an average usage, more so than the base usage.
Sure.
Because our averages are somewhere higher than this, but yeah, I, I understand what he's trying to. I mean, if the average is 35, use the 4,000. If it's 25, then use the 3,000, because you're going to bill it at, you bill it at the lower anyway.
We do.
So then use three. But my point is, make it so it's a little bit closer to a true representation than the minimum.
I just want to, I just want to piggyback off. Just one second. I'm trying to fill my computer up. That would be my brain. All right, so the average, the average single-family home uses 5,000 gallons. What, what kind of dwellings use less than 2,000, just for knowledge sake?
So it could be a single person. It could be in some cases where we charge the minimum because they have access to county water, but they aren't hooked up. So we do have several residences. In fact, I was talking to one of the staff members today about a gentleman who just had his meter replaced, and it was reading very low, so that he was using roughly each month about 1,000 to 1,500 gallons, and that's standard for him. It's someone who lives alone.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few. You, I believe you stated earlier that you didn't propose an increase in personal property tax, but you're advertising a ten cent increase. You propose an advertisement.
Isn't that in budget B though? I think that was in the, the B.
It was what was advertised?
All right, are you talking on the advertising page?
Yes.
That was something that was prepared for me, and I did not realize it had that increase in there. I just had the six.
I mean, it.
Not say that it can't be, because it's still, the board can advertise.
I'm just checking, I wanted to make sure I heard you right.
I think that's left over from the previous time. I did not have a proposed personal property tax increase in here.
Are you proposing any use of fund balance this year to settle, to equalize the budget other than for capital?
No.
And the, hold on, let me get, see what this question was. Of the 3% COLA, what percentage is funded by the state?
I can get that for you. It's, I don't, it's just, we've got about 400 employees. I think there's about 40 or so that are comp board from sheriff's department, which is the largest, and then there's here and there. In fact, Maria, I think when we did the, we were looking at the potential for that bonus, we had the number of employees on that that were comp board.
Yeah, I can get it for you. I don't have it, it, because what the state provides is 3% of the compensation board fund salary, which is a little bit different from what the county pays, so it's not a 3% even, but I can provide you all the amounts by department.
Because we, we currently employ more people than the comp board says we need to.
And pay them higher salaries.
That's why I was wondering what percentage it was.
Yeah, I can get that for you. You want to know what percentage of the COLA is being funded by the comp board?
Correct.
Yep, no problem.
If we do that as a straight.
The dollar amounts.
Right, if we do it as a straight percentage, that'll be easier because again, the salaries aren't quite the same for what they reimburse.
And I believe I just asked, all unassigned fund balance used is only for capital?
I, I can't think of anything else.
Correct.
So we've still got it at the 14 to 16% range, and the 16% is in there. Nope, well, we may be down to 15.7.
Dipped a little bit, yep, into, dipped a little bit into the 15 to 16% range with the changing of the software from debt-funded to PGO.
So there could be some funds there that would, you know, could be used if the board would like to.
Any other questions, Mr. Hudson?
So when we get to the debt payments eventually for the fire station and for the HVAC, we're talking roughly 2.003 cents increase, correct? And I know part of that is debt that's been paid off.
So the, the sales tax for the HVAC, we weren't looking at that as being.
That's the first year.
All of the years, the 500,000 per year coming from that. We already have over 2 million in reserve, and so in the sales tax, right.
Right, but then somewhere you have funding. It says debt-financed, comma, school sales tax. So is it just school sales tax?
HVAC is totally covered by the school sales tax.
We're going to get a loan and then cover it with school sales tax.
We're going to make the payments with, we already have a nest egg, and we're going to pull away from that nest egg for the next 15 years.
Just wanted.
Those monies are coming not just from the sales tax, but the interest generated by the.
Yes, that's how we've been able to accumulate more, yes. Very helpful.
Any other questions?
I think the, one of the things that you were saying, Mr. Hudson, just to be clear, that the amount that's needed for the loan for the fire department is greater, if there wasn't debt being paid off, it would be higher, but because we have assumed that $4 million continues to go there, it's, it's a penny.
But without it would be the 2.008. Based on this year's, what a penny would generate this year?
Oh, if you. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, on slide, on slide 37 and 38, the approximate debt payment is about 1.2 million for that, and so, yes, you are correct. I don't have the exact percentages, but it sounds like you got that correct.
Got all your questions?
I think so.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
On page 18, we have an increase in debt service of $31,000. That's not a big amount, but still, where does that increase come from? Next. Second.
That's likely just a little bit of shifting. I actually have every single debt payment in comparison to the prior years, but those, that's, one of the things about this governmental-type debt is that the payments fluctuate a little bit.
Sure.
So some of that is just, there's a little bit more general fund impact this year than last year. It also could be, there was, if you'll notice on one of the other debt, the debt fund slide, it looks like we have a big decrease in our debt fund this year, and that is due to me misreading one of the numbers in the 2025 budget, so there's not quite, that actually might be what some of that is as well, is that in 2025, I budgeted the interest off just a little bit, so it makes the 2026 budget look a little bit different.
And then I think the last one I have for now, on page eight, I do not care what Olive White and York County's amount is, but for our blue line in that chart, you know, we started at 92 cents or something, I would like to see if we could get it, what that 91 cents in revenue provided us versus what the 58.3% tax rate revenue provides the county in dollars and cents. And you can send that to us later, I don't, I think that's.
Yes, I do not have that right now.
She's got her calculator.
I'll send that out.
Yes, exactly.
I don't want to know.
Shouldn't it be, well, I agree we should know, but I know when we change assessments that we have to equalize, right? So the equalized rate has to generate no more than 1% of additional revenue, or else ask me, right?
Correct. For me and getting my head wrapped around what we're getting ready to do, I'd just like to see what, because it looks crazy that we've lost 36 cents in property tax evaluation, which I know when we look at the dollars and cents, it's not going to be that large of a, but I just want to see.
Yeah, no, it's fair. I agree.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody else? Ms. Steele, one question. I noticed you mentioned Gloucester Matthews Humane Society, and you said they were level funded, but you also said they were getting finance improved something.
Yes, and the animal controls operating budget, so, and I meant to mention, we will hopefully have to you by the end of the week, your file with all the line items. And so if you go to the animal controls departmental budget, they have contract services with Gloucester Matthew Humane Society. So the humane society has a kenneling, cleaning contract, and we, both groups recognize that what we were paying them was not what it was costing to get them clean. We have a lot more animals than we used to have, and since they started doing the adoptions and things, so we have about a $22,000 increase, I think it is there. And then I wish, I think I'm correct in this, that we just started to have to pay, or it's maybe it's an additional fee for the spaying and neutering. And so they are charging us just what it costs. They're not, you know, so it's a, it's a reduced rate, but that fee has also gone up because again, if you have more animals, you're taking them in, then you're getting them fixed and things.
We're not seeing that cost because you said it's level funded.
So it's level funding for their contribution to their operating budget. As we provide, as the county provides funds to different nonprofit groups, this one's a little bit different, that you make a contribution and you basically hire them at the same time. And so looking at the tight part of the budget and the fact that we have these other things divided up, it felt like we level funded everybody else, you know, be consistent.
Yeah, but I think if we look back, sorry, Dr. Or. I think looking back, though, there was a shift in their budget from where it was a big contribution, and then part of the contribution stayed.
and then part of the contribution stayed, and we broke off part of it, and it went into a different line item. To me, that's, that was, I think we had some conversation about it at the time that it happened. And I think that in doing that, we have probably caused a little more harm than good, but I think the rate that they're wanting to charge for the spay and neuter going forward will be beneficial to them. But they provide a lot of service to us that if we were doing ourselves, it probably costs us quite a bit more money. So, I think we need to look long and hard at how we break that out and maybe bring it back out of the Animal Control as, not necessarily as a contribution, but as a funding mechanism, so it, it shows itself better to the public.
To the public, that's where I am.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Or.
Okay, so my last question, so, looking at what we have ahead of us in the next twenty-four hours. Tomorrow, we are meeting with the school board, in which, at the end of the meeting, we have to adopt tax rates, correct?
No.
Adverti, I'm sorry, sorry, advertise, correct. Now, that was based on a discussion we had, I think, Mr. Crisco, you initiated last year to the adoption of tax rates following the school board meeting, rather than tonight, correct? So that we have a chance to review the school budget and then adopt, advertise, I'm sorry. It's an A, adopt, it's an A word, okay? Anyway, I just want to make sure that the public knows and I know, so we, in the next twenty-four hours, can think very seriously what we have ahead of us tomorrow night in meeting with the school board.
Go ahead.
I have the sixty-four thousand dollar question, and I think we ask this every year, and then, yeah, sixty, yeah.
Seven.
Seven?
That's the answer.
No, the answer's not seven. I already know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it just so it's out in the public. You have presented us with a budget that is calling or asking us for a four point three cent tax increase. If you had fully funded every request of every department and every position in the schools and everything else, what would that tax implication be to the citizens of Gloucester County?
I want to be fair about it, and when we looked at it, we were, we had not adjusted the revenues. So, we, you know, ten, eleven cents, but then we adjusted the revenues. So, I think what I would like to do is follow up and give you just the amount that was requested, and then, that's not in there, and show the difference for that.
Can we have that tomorrow?
Yes, yes.
Could you get that for us, so we can have that discussion tomorrow night while we're trying to figure out what we're gonna advertise this rate at? Because it's only fair that the public know that, you know, when you say you're, you know, you've worn yourself out, because you have had to, and I think when you talked to us, it was closer to that eleven cent range, that you've gotten this down to more than fifty percent less than what was asked for. So, I think that would be beneficial for us to have for our discussion tomorrow.
And I think, you know, they're talking misery loves company, as far as looking at what is not in the budget versus also what may not be in the school board's budget. So, however that ends up, I think everybody is, no one is gonna get what they would like to have to be able to do things.
And we have to remember, I know in last year's budget adoption, Mr. Hudson was the only vote against it, because he was opposed to using fund balance to do operating. And now that you have said we are not using any fund balance for operating, and that was three cents right there. Am I correct, Mr. Hudson? I mean, and so, we're now looking at the fact that when we adopted that budget, you know, it was fund balance was something we said we wouldn't use operating, and we did.
And while we're here, we know that one cent on real property is five hundred and sixty-eight, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. What is one cent on personal property?
Forty...
Eight six.
I didn't see it.
It's there.
It is on slide number eleven.
Forty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-eight.
Oh, okay. Mr. Hudson, do you remember what it was when we increased it by thirty cents in 2013?
Not off the top of my head.
A hundred and ten thousand dollars for, or, it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars for, we didn't want thirty cents, so it was a hundred and ten thousand for ten cent, per ten cent.
So, but, I mean, I know Ms. Steele did not propose it, but the real property tax, she hasn't proposed, or, the real property tax has a proposed increase, excuse me, at four point three cents. And inadvertently, she's got a proposed advertised budget of three oh five for personal property. If by chance we were to go that route, that's four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. I mean, that's something to consider, and instead of saying this is messed up, because it's a problem that, that I have with our budget, and I've had since the very beginning, is that we concentrate on real property and just throw a number in for personal property, because it's always been too difficult to determine. Whereas, I think that if we need to, that's something maybe this year we need to consider, is a change on the personal property and the real property to make things balance out.
One of the reasons why I didn't propose it is because we have, well...
Sorry, Carol.
This is the county administrator's proposed budget.
So, one of the reasons that I was concerned about having an increase there is because of the way that the cars were valued a few years ago, and that you might remember how York County and others were refunding money, and I just, you know, I feel like people were, have complained a lot that their cars were valued for more than what they'd sell them for, and we kind of are getting back to maybe a normal there. But we also know, we proposed the one percent overall revenue increase from that source, and we're hoping we make it. It's, I mean, we feel confident we will there, and, but it's also scary, and it's one of these things where the budget, after you adopt the budget, we will obviously find out before June what the book is and what we will make. And we've already had sort of a talk about, you know, a plan B on that, too, to come back to the board and say, it's not gonna be enough, and this is what we are gonna propose to do, to make up for it.
And, Mr. Hudson, I tend to agree with you, even though I still think that I'm paying way too much for the one car that I do pay the higher rate on. I still think it's in our best interest to advertise that at a higher rate when we get to that point, so we have that option available to us as opposed to not doing it, and then we can't do it later.
I mean, there's been too many years recently where the county administrator would suggest a proposed budget, and we do not, let's say, we do, she's, the county administrator would suggest a proposed rates, and we would never advertise any higher. Just because it's advertised higher doesn't mean it's going higher. But if you don't advertise higher, you can't meet some of the needs.
So, if it was a good idea, it was intentional.
No.
My hands are away from Sead. Messing with you. All right, so, four point three is what you have in there.
Yes.
And so, listening, so just walk down the road with me for a minute. Listening is half a penny this year and half a penny next year. And I'm not giving years, but for the fire department, and I'm just using them as an example. So, to achieve the goal, just from my own thought process, if you, if we, if we wanted to, if you wanted to add that in, that would be somewhere around, what, six, six cent, right?
Five point three.
So, yes, you could start collecting that money now, not have to have a second increase. You could put a reserve on it, that that's what it's for. Several different options there.
You got a question?
That's out of my ear.
Okay, so I guess, tomorrow night? Six o'clock, TC Ward.
There's two of you out there. Y'all ready for tomorrow night? Well, there's two on the board and then the superintendent.
Okay. If there are not any more questions, then we need a motion for one other thing here.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, let's go home.